That was my soul brother Billy Vera on KJAS with Cherry. Love that version of that song. Billy's got the goods, man. He's got a book coming out, too. Did you know that?
I didn't know that.
Yeah. It's gonna be good. He's got a lot, he's got so much history. He's been in the music business a long time and been in a lot of incredible scenes, and he always rises to the top, whatever scene he's in. Stay with us, 'cause the music continues right after the break with Susie Meisner. And close your eyes here on KJAS.
Commissioner Aguilar, would you lead us into the questions?
Everybody please rise.
Thank you. Please.
Ready to begin?
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oral call, please.
Commissioner Matchin.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Do we have any changes?
No, we don't.
Having none, the agenda stands. And now, it's time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Oral communication is now open. Would anybody like to address the commission? Having none, oral communications is now closed. Okay, we have no minutes on the consent calendar tonight. The minutes for October 17th meeting will be agendized for our next meeting. And now, it's time for the election of a new chairperson and vice chair. So, with that, nominations are now open for chairperson.
I would like to nominate Deb Matchin for chairperson.
I second.
Are there any other nominations for chair?
Do I second that?
Okay, having none, I will close nominations. And do we have a motion?
Just vote.
Oh, that was it. We were supposed to have...
We're good.
Okay. Please vote.
Okay, darn.
Okay. I think we have five. It's showing 20 nominees.
Yep.
Unanimous.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Nominations are now open...
Push the button to get it to go away. Here.
It's hard, 'cause I can't see anything. Nominations are now open for vice chair. Do we have any nominations? Actually, I would like to nominate Mike Thomas as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. Please vote.
Abstained.
You abstained? Okay. We have one abstention and four yeses. The vote carries. Congratulations. Is there anything we do now at this point, now that we're...
Are we supposed to shuffle chairs or anything?
Yeah.
You all sit on that side, right?
So, the two of you will play places?
So, we're all moving?
Who knows what it means?
Robert? I think Robert and I can just switch.
Yes.
Is that okay?
That'll work.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I'll take my water if you don't drink it. See, I'm a water engineer, so I don't drink all the water.
Okay. Okay, and so, here we have our newly reorganized Planning Commission. Okay, now on to business. For our first public hearing, we have conditional use permit 16-1. And does staff have a report?
Yes, madam chair and fellow commissioners, and happy new year. Tonight I have item two, which is at 1011 Seal Beach Boulevard, conditional use permit 16-1, to allow the conversion of an existing vehicle's storage use to a personal storage use inside an existing building. The site is located at Seal Beach Boulevard and Adolfo Lopez Drive. It is surrounded by industrial uses and has a parking lot on the north side, part of Boeing's location to the rear, also another industrial use to the rear, the police station to the south, and the military base across Seal Beach Boulevard. The current zoning is RHD-20, but was previously light manufacturing. The existing use is an RV storage both inside the building and on the exterior. It's proposed to be 119,000 square foot personal storage use on the interior of the building and an RV storage of 34 RVs over here in this portion of the property. The operation will be similar hours. The RV storage currently is Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and it will stay that way. And the personal storage will be Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The RV storage is actually a more intensive use than what we will have here proposed this evening, as the site currently has RV storage almost entirely in the parking lot and throughout the building. And on any given holiday weekend or any other time, you could have numerous vehicles leaving that site at any given time coming out onto Adolfo Lopez. The site, the access of the site will be off of Adolfo Lopez, as you can see on these illustrations, that the building sits below grade of Seal Beach Boulevard, and it's a major arterial, so you can't access it there. Adolfo Lopez is the only other street that we have direct access from the site. The existing site is 65,000 square feet, and they will be adding a little over 53,000 square feet. The general plan use map designates the subject property as residential high density. The subject site was previously designated as light industrial prior to the city-initiated zone map amendment and general plan amendment in 2013. The subject site is a non-conforming status, which the municipal code allows to convert to a use that would have been permitted conditionally prior to the zone change. The current municipal code allows for personal storage use with a conditional use permit, and that's why it's here this evening. As you can see, here's the site. Here's where the existing RV parking is. It actually flows over into other parking here, and there's no parking on either side of the building currently. There are dock doors that are currently on the exterior of the building, and just to let you know, there is no additional square footage going to be added to this building. It will all be interior improvements. The applicant is proposing to construct this in three phases. The first phase, right here, and then they would go on. The anticipation for the completion of all three of these phases is sometime in 2019. But they would also like the opportunity to do this in one phase and not do it in three phases, and that would be probably completed in late 2018, early 2019 as a complete project. If they were to do it in phases, there would be portions of the RV storage that would still be open during the remodel, but if they were to do it as one project, it would be, the site would just be shut down, and they would do it as one phase. Phase one, if they do it in phases, would be on the south side of the building, and it would be to construct 132 personal units, 64 on the first floor, and then to build a mezzanine or second floor of 68 units right here in this area. The office space and the existing warehousing area will not be touched. They will also be looking at adding 13 parking spaces on the south side of the building during that phase and doing public right-of-way improvements that I will discuss later. In phase two, they will be adding 99 personal units on the first floor and 99 on the second floor of this, adding this mezzanine right here. No exterior improvements. And on the third phase, it will be at completion, and they will add 141 to the first floor, 144 to the second floor, which is 285, for a total of 615 personal storage units. And they will also construct an additional 20 parking spaces on the north side of the building. The site is required to have 76 parking spaces. On completion, they'll have 129 parking spaces. The, per the improvement plan, this area right here, the applicant has agreed to complete public improvements at the intersection of Seal Beach Boulevard and Adolfo Lopez. That would extend the southbound bike lane from its current terminus north of the southbound right-hand turn only to the intersection. This is to complete the bike lane that is required per the general plan for a class two bike lane and major streets. So currently, right now, this bike lane isn't right here. It terminates right here. So in order to keep bicyclists safe and per our plan, it would extend going straight through here. So they would also, and this current right-hand turn lane is right here, they would extend it back. With that, that, no correspondence regarding the project has been received by staff, and that completes my presentation. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does, do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I do. Steve, did you say, is this thing on? Okay. Did you make some comments about parking on the north side of the structure? Access from the north side of the structure from Apollo Drive?
There can be no access from Apollo Drive, as this area right in here is a parking lot that belongs to Boeing. So there is a property line that runs right along this area here. There is parking going to be proposed, but it comes off of Adolfo Lopez.
So, all access on the north side is owned by somebody else?
Of the adjacent property, yes.
Does it have like a parking for farmers and merchants?
Yeah, 'cause I drove over there today, and it would be so easy to just put a roadway through, because quite frankly, you know, you can have a use other than this, and it would have a more intensified land use. We've got the PD there, and first of all, there should be no parking for accurate storage on Adolfo Lopez Drive. But secondly, we've got to keep that roadway clear for the police to get in and out to do what they need to do. Right now, storage is a benign use, but they are permitted to do something out of a light manufacturing, which would change the dynamics. And when I drove by there today, it just seemed so simple to just connect the dots and put the roadway through, and that would take everything off of, all the demand off of Adolfo Lopez Drive. That's one of the things that concern me, that and the fact that there should be no parking for this facility on Adolfo Lopez, because the PD really doesn't have a parking lot. And so when you go down there, you park right there. That's what your parking is. So, those are my concerns.
The parking along Adolfo Lopez is public parking.
Is public parking, I know.
Public parking. And the property right here along Apollo Drive is owned by someone else, so we can't just access this property through that property.
Yeah, I see. But I looked at it today and said, "Farmers and merchants." I went, "Where?" So that was very surprising, 'cause when I went down there, it just seemed so easy to put a driveway, just cut it right through and knock a hole in the fence and go right in that way, and that would take all the pressure off of Adolfo Lopez Drive, because I said, "I'm looking down the road. If somebody comes in, buys the property, let's say, and wants to intensify the land use, I don't want anything in there inhibiting the ability of our police to get in and out to go do what they have to do." That's my concern.
Are there any other concerns?
Yeah, if I could ask a couple of questions. One is, you say they want to turn this from a three-phase project into a one-phase project? Why is it a three-phase project in the first place? I mean, the city, is that driven by any sort of city requirement?
The applicant requested to have it in three phases at the beginning of this application.
Oh, they don't need our permission to do it in three or phase, or three or one or 50 phases, right? I mean...
They don't need our permission to do it in phases, but we do have some improvements that need to be taken care of, so we were looking at what, at what time specific improvements would take place in those phases.
So the condition would be that they do perform the improvements on Seal Beach Boulevard before completing the work on the, you know, if they're doing it all at once, I assume?
That's correct. It's part of phase one, and there is a condition regarding that.
Okay, very good. Now, I do have another question, just about parking. This is more of my information, is, so for this type of use, the required parking is 70, you said 70-something spaces?
For this particular use, it's actually one parking space for every 20 units.
Oh, is that typically how it works with self-storage?
That's how it is. That's the requirements the city of Seal Beach has in their zoning.
Oh, okay, very good. Okay. And so, they have 139, 129 spaces? How many of those are going to have RVs parked in them?
Currently, right now, only 34.
Well, I guess the question is, I'm just saying, is, it's an RV parking place, right? So are they, are these 70 spots that need to be made available for people who are, I mean, meaning they can't use, they can't use some of those 70 required spots to store RVs? Is that a true statement?
That's correct. They cannot put the RVs in the vehicle parking area.
Okay, very good. Okay. And I think that's all the questions I have.
I do have a question. There's a mention of noise. What exactly are they expecting in the way of noise from this place?
Well, the current use is all vehicles parking, so that would be, generate a lot more noise, because all of the personal storage units will be within the enclosed building.
Prior to the zone change. The current municipal code allows for personal storage use with a conditional use permit, and that's why it's here this evening. As you can see, here's the site, here's where the existing RV parking is. It actually flows over into other parking here, and there's no parking on either side of the building currently. There are dock doors that are currently on the exterior of the building, and just to let you know, there is no additional square footage going to be added to this building. It will all be interior improvements. The applicant is proposing to construct this in three phases. The first phase, right here, and then they would go on. The anticipation for the completion of all three of these phases is sometime in 2019. But they would also like the opportunity to do this in one phase and not do it in three phases, and that would be probably completed in late 2018, early 2019 as a complete project. If they were to do it in phases, there would be portions of the RV storage that would still be open during the remodel, but if they were to do it as one project, it would be, the site would just be shut down, and they would do it as one phase. Phase one, if they do it in phases, would be on the south side of the building, and it would be to construct 132 personal units, 64 on the first floor, and then to build a mezzanine or second floor of 68 units, right here in this area. The office space and the existing warehousing area will not be touched. They will also be looking at adding 13 parking spaces on the south side of the building during that phase, and doing public right-of-way improvements that I will discuss later. In phase two, they will be adding 99 personal units on the first floor and 99 on the second floor of this, adding this mezzanine right here. No exterior improvements. And on the third phase, it will be at completion, and they will add 141 to the first floor, 144 to the second floor, which is 285, for a total of 615 personal storage units. And they will also construct an additional 20 parking spaces on the north side of the building. The site is required to have 76 parking spaces. On completion, they'll have 129 parking spaces. The, per the improvement plan, this area right here, the applicant has agreed to complete public improvements at the intersection of Seal Beach Boulevard and Adolfo Lopez. That would extend the Southbound bike lane from its current terminus north of the Southbound right-hand turn only to the intersection. This is to complete the bike lane that is required per the general plan for a Class Two bike lane and major streets. So currently, right now, this bike lane isn't right here, it terminates right here. So in order to keep bicyclists safe, and per our plan, it would extend going straight through here. So they would also, and this current right-hand turn lane is right here, they would extend With that, that, no correspondence regarding the project has been received by staff, and that completes my presentation. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does, do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I do. Steve, did you say, is this thing on? Okay. Did you make some comments about parking on the north side of the structure? Access from the north side of the structure from Apollo Drive?
There can be no access from Apollo Drive, as this area right in here is a parking lot that belongs to Boeing. So there is a property line that runs right along this area here. There is parking going to be proposed, but it comes off of Adolfo Lopez.
So all access on the north side is owned by somebody else?
Of the adjacent property, yes.
It has like a parking for farmers and merchants.
Yeah, I, because I, I drove over there today, and it would be so easy to just put a roadway through, because quite frankly, you know, you can, you can have a use other than this, and it would have a more intensified land use. We've got the PD there, and first of all, there should be no parking factor or storage on Adolfo Lopez Drive. But secondly, we've got to keep that roadway clear for the police to get in and out to do what they need to do. Right now, storage is a benign use, but they are permitted to do something out of a light manufacturing, which would change the dynamics. And when I drove by there today, it just seemed so simple to just, you know, connect the dots and put the, you know, the roadway through. And that would take everything off of, all the, the demand off of Adolfo Lopez Drive. That's one of the things that concern me, that and the fact that there should be no parking for this facility on Adolfo Lopez, because the PD really doesn't have a parking lot. And so when you go down there, you park right there. That's what your parking is. So those are my concerns.
The parking along Adolfo Lopez is public parking.
Is public parking, I know.
Public parking, and the property right here along Apollo Drive is owned by someone else, so we can't just access this property through that property.
Yeah, I see, so, but I looked at it today, and said, farmers and merchants, and I went, where? So that was very surprising, because when I went down there, it just seemed so easy to put a driveway, just cut it right through and take, knock a hole in the fence and go right in that way, and that would take all the pressure off of Adolfo Lopez Drive. Because I said, I'm looking down the road. If somebody comes in, buys the property, let's say, and wants to intensify the land use, I don't want anything in there inhibiting the ability of our police to get in and out to go do what they have to do. That's my concern.
Are there any other concerns?
Yeah, if I could ask a couple of questions. One is, you say they want to turn this from a three-phase project into a one-phase project? Why is it a three-phase project in the first place? I mean, the city, is that driven by any sort of city requirement?
The applicant requested to have it in three phases at the beginning of this application.
Oh, but they don't need our permission to do it in three or phase, or three or one or 50 phases, right? I mean...
They don't need our permission to do it in phases, but we do have some improvements that need to be taken care of, so we were looking at, at what, at what time specific improvements would take place in those phases.
So the condition would be that they do perform the improvements on Seal Beach Boulevard before completing the work on the, you know, if they're doing it all at once, I assume?
That's correct. It's part of phase one, and there is a condition regarding that.
Okay, very good. Now, I do have another question, is, just about parking, this is more of my information, is, so for this type of use, the required parking is 70, you said 70-something spaces?
For this particular use, it's actually one parking space for every 20 units.
Oh, is that typically how it works with self-storage?
That's how it is, that's the requirements the City of Seal Beach has in their zoning.
Oh, okay, very good, okay. And so they have 139, 129 spaces? How many of those are going to have RVs parked in them?
Currently, right now, only 34.
Well, I guess the question is, I, is, I, I'm just saying is, it's an RV parking place, right? So are they, are these 70 spots that need to be made available for people who are, I, I mean, meaning they can't use, they can't use some of those 70 required spots to store RVs? Is that a true statement?
That's correct. They cannot put the RVs in their, in the vehicle parking area.
Okay, very good, okay. And I think that's all the questions I have.
I do have a question. There's a mention of noise. What exactly are they expecting in the way of noise from this place?
Well, the current use is all vehicles parking, so that would be, generate a lot more noise, because all of the personal storage units will be within the enclosed building.
Any other questions?
The coming and going, I guess.
Do another question.
No, I don't.
No, I don't have any.
Okay, I do have another question. That site was rezoned residential high density in 2013, and it is in the housing element. And I just want to make sure that we don't do anything that prohibits this site from being available for low to moderate housing per the housing element.
The current zoning allows for this type of use with a conditional use permit. If the applicant so wished, he could change this to a residential-type project and construct houses.
Okay. Any other questions? Then with that, I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Alan Burks, I'm the architect for the project. My address is 100 Ocean Gate in Long Beach. And by the way, congratulations on your election tonight.
Thank you.
I do want to thank staff, they've been very helpful in guiding us through what has eventually become a pretty complex project involving traffic studies and civil engineering studies, and they've guided us through this, and we've gotten to this point. I also want to thank you for considering this conditional use permit, because we intend to provide a product that is desperately needed in Seal Beach and the surrounding community. There's a real lack of personal storage spaces in Seal Beach. And we're also going to improve the street. We're providing a very deep right-turn lane onto Adolfo Lopez Road, which will ease congestion at that corner, and we're continuing your bike lane. We're also going to provide new landscaping surrounding the entire building, it will be beautified, we're going to have new security fencing, so the complex will look much, much nicer than it does now. And I'm here if you have any technical questions, the owner of the property, John Kruger, is also here, if you have any questions for John.
Thank you. Are there any, anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? You may be seated, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Burke, can you come back up?
Hi, I'm not sure if you can answer this, or if the owner can answer this, but with your current occupancy of RVs and boat storage, I'm assuming boats as well, how many current renters would be displaced with their vehicles, meaning would they have to find other places to go and store those vehicles, or?
That's really a question for John.
Yes, I wasn't sure if he should answer or not.
Hi, I'm John Kruger. I've owned the building since 1995, and we actually operated the manufacturing facility there from 1995 to 2010. There's about 450 units total between indoor and outdoor, and about 20% of all our units are Seal Beach residents, so about 80% are from somewhere else. And with this transition, it'll probably be heavily populated by Seal Beach residents, we're pretty sure, that's what we've been led to believe. Probably, almost all the vehicles ultimately will be displaced, except for the ones stored outside, so.
Do you have an idea of how many that is?
Well, it's, I think we have spaces for 34.
So 34?
So about 400.
44 units?
About 400 units would be displaced.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions?
Well, yes, I, just continuing with that, where, what will happen with those 400?
Well, they're all privately owned, and so we have time, we'll give people notice. We may, and we're considering, based on this situation, to procure another building to put all of those in, in Huntington Beach.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking very hard at that, as a few sites we've already identified, because we'd like to keep those customers and their units, but we really can't, you know, can't do anything about that till we move forward on this. But that would be more than likely what we're going to attempt to do, so that's the plan.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Having none, public hearing is closed. And?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Can I make a statement? Can we move for approval with the caveat that all parking in that facility be on their
You would like to change the motion?
Basically amend it, that all parking be on their site.
That's a new motion, so.
As opposed to no parking, because that is a, that isn't the widest of driveways, and because of the presence of the police station.
That is not my motion. Yeah, I'd like to have a new motion that says that, that's fine.
Okay, okay. Well, you guys were quick.
Well, it, it appears that all the parking is on the facility, as far as I understand, and you're concerned about the public parking, that's on the street that they don't own?
There's a street there, and there is really no public parking for the police, because I'd go up and down that street again today. And that, that is a concern that I have, because I'm looking for, down the road, because we're dealing with this now on another, another project within the city, I'm looking at future use where parking could be a problem, that's my concern. And I want to be sure that we just don't do anything that's going to restrict the city's ability for that site to be, how, water-modding housing.
At this time, we have a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, may I kind of clarify that maybe?
Yes, please.
Currently, right now, the site does have adequate parking under this proposal. It meets the requirement, plus it has a surplus of 53 parking spaces. And if there was another use that were to come in, before we would issue them a business license, it may have to come back before this, if it requires a conditional use permit, or we'd also take a look at it as part of our review for the business license application.
Yeah, I think that's satisfactory, okay. Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All right, it passed unanimously. Congratulations.
By the way, is that noise coming from that?
It gets the, the air, or the vent on the projector.
Yes, it, yeah, Chair and Commissioners, that...
Is this new?
So much for improvement.
It's getting hot, apparently.
Just as a note, Chair and Commissioners, this started happening this afternoon, it may be related to the heat level, but the Public Works Department is aware of it, and they're looking into it already, so.
And can you inform them of the notice to appeal?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking about... Do I have to hold this up? We got sidelined.
Is this on? I got sidelined by the noise. Um, yes, there's a 10-day, 10-day appeal period from the decision of the commission. The appeal period starts running tomorrow. Thank you. All right. Up next is Zone Text Amendment 17-1, medical marijuana. Do we have a staff report? Yes, I'm going to do the staff report. Just a slight correction, it is non-medical marijuana. This is an ordinance, currently, the city prohibits in Chapter 5, medical marijuana dispensaries and mobile marijuana dispensaries. This is now an ordinance that's for your consideration in response to the voter approval of Proposition 64, which deals with, you could, you could call it recreational marijuana, or non-medical marijuana, or we've used the phrase "commercial marijuana," because that's what's used in the statutes that have been adopted by the voters. So when I, and that was going to be one of my points, when I say "commercial marijuana," I'm really talking about anything that isn't medical marijuana. This is an ordinance to, if you, for you to consider recommending approval to the council for Zone Text Amendment 17-1 to amend Chapter 11.4.100, which is currently only dealing with medical marijuana, of Part 4, and amending Table 11.2.05.010, and Table 11.2.10.010 of Part 2 of Title 11, to not make any changes to the medical marijuana prohibitions, but now to prohibit all marijuana cultivation with a limited exception of indoor cultivation, which were basically preempted by Proposition 64, and then to prohibit all commercial, i.e. non-medical marijuana uses, in any zoning district or specific plan throughout the city, and make a finding of exemption from environmental review under SEQA Guideline 15061, Beas and Roy III. If you recall, during the November election, the voters approved what is called the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which for short, I'm going to refer to as Proposition 64. And as a result of that approval, is now legal for persons 21 years of age or older to smoke or ingest marijuana or marijuana products, to possess, process, transport, purchase, obtain, and give away to other persons age 21 or older, up to a certain amount of marijuana or concentrated marijuana, and also to process, plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process up to six marijuana plants for personal use in or upon the grounds of a private residence. Now, the state pursuant to Proposition 64 is going to be developing a state licensing scheme for commercial marijuana activity, which will apply to recreational marijuana dispensaries and commercial cultivation sites. And under the proposition, in New Business and Professions Code, Section 26055E, the state will not issue or approve an application for a state license if the approval of that license would violate a local ordinance. So the reason this is being brought to you is because the city would like you to consider whether you want to ban or regulate, so that, in other words, the state would not issue a license. The Proposition 64 also permits cities to adopt and enforce local ordinances to regulate non-medical marijuana businesses, such as business license requirements, local zoning, and land use requirements, requirements related to reducing exposure to secondhand smoke, and also to prohibit the establishment or operation of one or more types of marijuana businesses within the jurisdiction. Now, Proposition 64, as I mentioned, does allow a person to have up to six marijuana plants, or processed products of those plants, in their private residence, but Proposition 64 allows the city to reasonably regulate cultivation, and can prohibit outdoor cultivation, so long as the California Attorney General does not determine that non-medical use of marijuana is lawful under federal or state law. Now, one thing I do want to point out is marijuana of all kinds, sounds like my dog, remains an illegal substance, controlled substance, under federal law, so everything we are doing, just as with medical marijuana, federal law is federal law, it has not changed. But in any event, what we have presented to you is solely the land use restrictions, to amend the code, to prohibit all commercial marijuana activity, which is very broadly defined, and tracks the statutory language in Proposition 64. It also has the exceptions that are required by the new state law, and then the only exception for the prohibitions in these various sections will be the indoor cultivation, not outdoor cultivation, but the indoor cultivation of six or fewer live marijuana plants, so long as they're inside a residence or inside an accessory structure located upon the grounds of a private residence that is fully enclosed and secured. The actual regulatory mechanisms for indoor cultivation are going to be presented as an amendment to Chapter 5 of Title 5. That's where the current restrictions on medical marijuana, or I should say, the prohibitions on medical marijuana are also listed, which prohibit issuance of a business license. Some of the regulations will deal not only with, what I would say, they're broader than land use, per se, there are operational restrictions on what you can and can't do inside a residence when you're cultivating up to those six plants. So that's the reason why it's going to be in that part of the code, rather than in the zoning code. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know. Any questions?
If I could ask, my question is, is our, is our ordinance, or our rules, or whatever you want to say, that apply to our city, are they as restrictive as you can get as far as prohibiting medical and commercial marijuana use, and for commercial and personal uses? Is it as prohibitive as you can get?
Yeah, the...
As allowed?
A lot of cities have prohibited medical marijuana and medical marijuana dispensaries and mobile, you know, people driving through the city, selling like, the sort of ideas like an ice cream truck, we don't want that. That, of course, was done before this proposition, which basically opens up a lot of personal marijuana usage if you fall within what this proposition would allow. The prohibitions on outdoor cultivation, and the types of regulatory operational requirements that we're going to be recommending to the city council are pretty typical of what other cities that want to restrict it or prohibit it are doing.
Okay, very good, thank you, that's what I thought, but, yeah, thank you.
I do, I look at this, and it says here, to prohibit all marijuana uses.
To the extent we can under state law, yes, that is correct.
You can, well, my concern is, that statement prohibits medical marijuana?
It's already prohibited.
Under federal law?
No, it's already prohibited under the municipal code, based on the prior initiative that was adopted by the voters. So we're not changing that. But now, we are expressly saying, not only is medical marijuana prohibited, but any other type of marijuana usage is prohibited, except to the extent we are preempted, which is the first, up to six plants in the residence.
Okay. People can get cards issued by the state, pick them up at the county, to the Environmental Health Agency, for medical marijuana. So, so if they can do that, and you're telling me they can't, I'm not catching what's going on here.
This ordinance, this proposed ordinance is not addressing medical marijuana.
Okay.
This ordinance is addressing if you cannot qualify for an ID card, but you want to grow six plants in your house.
Because that's not what it says here. It says prohibit all marijuana uses. That's the misnomer.
We can, we can modify the title, if the consensus of the commissioners, you would like to modify the title, the intent was to say, we want to prohibit everything, except with a limited exception for indoor cultivation, as we are required under state law to do.
I'm not concerned about cultivation, I'm sure there are others that do have that concern, but there are people who do get prescriptions for medical marijuana, don't smoke it, get the, the oil, and it can be given twice a day with the prescription of a doctor. And I'll be blunt, I have an 11-year-old grandson who's autistic and has seizures, and because of that, my daughter was able to get a medical marijuana card issued by the state, she picked it up through the county. She orders it online from a place in Santa Rosa, she needs a prescription from a very specific doctor. She needs a prescription from a very specific doctor. They make it for children who have seizures, and it do not respond to any other medication. It is a choice of last resort. It is administered under his tongue, twice a day, 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM, works well. His neurologist has considered him basically stable. Now, in order to get this prescription, you have to prove that you have tried at least three other medications that don't work. You have to present medical records that prove seizure activity, such as an EEG. The options, they had the surgery, medical device, or try the medical marijuana. Surgery was risky for him. He is considered a medically fragile child, and he does not respond well to anesthesia. The one and only time they gave him anesthesia, he stopped breathing. My daughter was standing there. That scared the bejubes out of her. So medical marijuana was the choice, and so far it's working. I don't want to vote for something that's going to prohibit him from being in this city and being able to be administered that. So that's why I asked those questions. And I'm sure there are other parents out there who are dealing with this. We're not talking about some pothead going up to an attic and smoking his heart out. We're talking about there are medical benefits, and I do not want to see that restricted. When I read in this thing where it says prohibit all marijuana uses, that's just too, that's not right. That's why I have a problem with the way this is worded.
It's clear within the text, but that is mistaken.
That's what, I'm reading it right here, prohibit all marijuana uses.
Currently, the current prohibition without this, which predates Prop 64, does not allow a medical marijuana dispensary in Seal Beach. It does not allow a mobile delivery tool. However, as was said at the time that ordinance was adopted, the city can't preclude somebody going out of the city and bringing back something. So the intent of this is not to preclude someone who has a medical marijuana card, a legitimate medical need, from using a medical marijuana or a medical marijuana product like the oil. It is intended to address the other aspect of marijuana, which is now opened up by Prop 64. So what I'm hearing you say is you would like this to make clear that we're not intending to preclude someone who themselves, or a family member, a child, has a medical need that justifies the use of medical marijuana.
This needs to specifically state that it is exempting medical marijuana use.
As allowed under the other provisions of state law.
The way this is written, my daughter could not drive into Seal Beach, the child could not spend the night and give it to him, not that you guys, you know, anybody'd know it, but I'm just saying, well, you never know, you know, God forbid something goofy happens and the police are there. I don't want somebody giving her a hard time. If she is legally allowed to have this for him, then I don't think this ordinance should be written where he would have, that would make him, what they're doing, illegal.
So I, we have the definition of medical marijuana on page 7, is taken from your existing ordinance on medical marijuana. I think it's been abbreviated a little bit. Do you see that subsection K on page 7?
I'm looking at this, yeah.
So I think what you are asking to do, have us do, if the commission concurs, is add a provision that makes clear this is not intended to prohibit the possession or use by someone who qualifies for use of medical marijuana.
Who is medically necessary, yes.
Okay. And if that's, if that's what the commission would like to include in a motion, we can go through and-
Would you like to make a motion?
Modify it to make that clear.
Yes, I would like to make the motion, what Amy just said, because we cannot preclude his ability to use this. And there are other people out there who have similar needs for what this is cannabis, I can't even pronounce it, cannabinoid oil. With the children, they either put it under their tongue or on their feet, under their feet, and my daughter chose your administration because she could control that better. And it's quite amazing.
So we have a motion?
So the motion is that we-
Chair Machin, I don't remember if we had the public hearing.
No, you mean-
Oh, we haven't even had the hearing.
Hmm?
No. We got carried away. Sorry, Seth. We got carried away. Do we have any other questions of Seth?
I actually do. So I, I as a layman is not, am not privy to the language for Proposition 64. And you mentioned in your presentation that there were certain portions that would allot some leeway for municipalities or cities to pass laws that would, in some ways, maybe contradict-
Federal law.
Federal law.
Well, this whole thing contradicts-
Right. I guess my concern is from a litigious aspect, is that if there is any sort of dispute, what kind of exposure do we run into when we're going over language? Because, you know, like, for a second, a second ago, we discussed the language specifically about how this addresses, prohibits all marijuana use. So that's something that is broad enough to invite three or four different interpretations from any sort of litigation.
Well, the existing ordinance that prohibits the dispensaries and the collectives for medical marijuana incorporates the definitions in the state initiative that was adopted by the voters several years ago. So it's consistent with state law. The new definitions in this proposed ordinance track the definitions in Prop 64. What we can't change as a city is the federal government currently still, and recently came out and said, "there's no medically acceptable use for marijuana," notwithstanding, you know, as you just heard, one viewpoint of that. The cities in California that are trying to deal with this are trying to balance, federal law says it's illegal, but state law, the citizens have voted, and so to try and reach sort of that happy medium of balancing, yeah, the federal government could come in and say, "none of this is legitimate," and that does happen, where they come in and they want to prosecute, versus, we want to make sure that we get in place what we feel as a city we need, because what we may or may not want is the state to issue licenses to let some sort of commercial marijuana business open up on Main Street. I mean, some cities are encouraging it. I think, is it Desert Hot Springs? You may know. There's a couple of cities that are, I think Adelanto is one, they want to encourage it for the tax revenue. Other cities, like this is one on medical marijuana, have said, "we don't want it." So cities are basically saying, "we're going to follow what the state initiatives say we can do, and the federal government will do." I'm not downplaying it, because it kind of puts law enforcement sometimes in a funny predicament, but we're going to do what we need to do to protect our cities from, if we don't want these uses, we want to make sure the state will not issue any licenses. Because absent, I think, the federal government saying you cannot issue any licenses, the state is proceeding forward to implement these propositions.
Okay, I guess my concern is that by taking a definitive stance on something close to this, that, especially following an election that we just had, and the interpretation that the layman would have, and that's why I mentioned the layman in Prop 64, do we open ourselves up to exposure for any sort of litigation, whether we prevail or not, but are we going to be looking at people going, "look, I want to, you know, I'm a citizen of Seal Beach, I want to do this, I want to do that, and state says I can do this, I'm just going to go ahead and follow suit?" I mean, is there language that would bind us into a situation where we're protected in 64?
The, I guess, I'm not sure how, I mean, what you might have is somebody thinking they're, because they're legal under state law, the federal government couldn't come after them. And I think that would depend on how the state decides to implement the licensing provisions. I would assume they will make clear, "we are not guaranteeing you that the federal government won't come in and say, 'you can't do this,'" because the state doesn't have authority to do that.
Okay, so you're saying we're essentially protected under federal law currently?
Well, I wouldn't say, I'm not sure, are we protected if the federal government goes after someone? If the federal government goes after someone-
I mean, if somebody comes after us, and we have, we take a position, the city of Seal Beach takes a position against somebody who wants to push through and basically citing current, the due legislation to-
Well, but see, the issue you would potentially have, I mean, the state legislation clearly says the state will not issue a license if the local jurisdiction prohibits it.
Okay.
So if there's a dispute over what is or isn't permissible as a prohibition or restriction, we can't insulate ourselves, because somebody may sue and say, "that's a legitimate regulation" or "that isn't."
But that language is in there.
Well, no, there's no language, because as with any ordinance, the city adopts its best estimate of what the law will allow, and if somebody chooses to say, "that's not legitimate under, in this case, the initiative," and wants to sue, they will sue, and the city will defend. So.
So the AUMA provisions, that is what protects us, right? The local control?
What the AUMA or Prop 64 does is it allows certain types of, I'm going to say, non-medical marijuana, some people, that's why I said, some people say recreational marijuana. It allows certain personal uses of recreational marijuana. It does not allow, as an example, you can't walk down the street smoking a joint. You can't say, "I have the right to come in a business where I work and smoke a joint." It doesn't regulate that. So those remain prohibited. If a city adopts a set of ordinance provisions, the city is doing so with findings that they are consistent with what the state will allow us to do, what the proposition will allow us to do.
Okay.
You can't insulate yourself from possible suit, as you know.
So what I was referring to, and I was looking desperately for it, and I think this is it, the AUMA permits cities to adopt and enforce local ordinances to regulate non-medical marijuana businesses, including but not limited to, so that's on businesses, and then it goes on to say that use as well. So that protects us, correct?
Right.
We have the right to regulate-
We will point, what we've done is say, "okay, this is what the initiative says. Based on that, we think you can do X." And someone may disagree and say, "no, you've gone too far," but that's our best estimate of what a reasonable interpretation of the initiative is.
Okay, and then I had one other, this may sound silly, but my concern for people who do want to use it for medical purposes, that they don't want to buy from an unknown source, because they want to control the quality. So they can have six plants. So how is that, so if I have six plants, they're growing, they're live, they're not usable, need to be dried and, you know, cultivated and whatever, so I can also have in other stages, I can have plants in other stages drying, or?
No, you can only have six live plants and the products from those plants.
And the products from those plants.
Yeah.
So that's how it's considered. Okay.
One other thing, on page 7, the bottom of page 7, under K, it lists some of the examples for marijuana, medical marijuana use, should add seizures to that?
Specisticity.
Hmm?
I think specificity-
It actually says, "or any other serious medical condition."
But getting back to the beginning of the ordinance, where it says prohibit all marijuana uses, I think that needs to be qualified to exempt medical marijuana uses. Because as I said, this isn't something where you just walk in and say, "hey, I need, you know, prescription for this."
What we could do-
You have to go through a very strict regimen to get the prescription for it.
What we could do, if you actually look at page 4, which has the title, that's where the beginning of the ordinance is, we could modify the title, where it says, "to retain existing prohibitions on medical marijuana, to prohibit all other marijuana uses."
See, what are the existing prohibitions on medical marijuana?
No dispensaries, no mobile dispensaries.
Oh, okay.
And that, so what I'm thinking is, we could modify that title to, you know, add something about with limited exception, and retain limited exception for lawful medical marijuana uses. I have to come up with the language, but I-
Okay, okay, good.
But if that's the general concept of what the commission is getting at, we can add that in.
Can we continue that pending your construction of the wording?
I don't think that's necessary. I think we can, when we get to that point, we're not there yet, but when we, after we've had the public hearing-
Oh, okay.
Come back to discuss.
Okay.
And the motion is made.
Because I like, I want to hear what Amy, what she instructs for the exception, for that wording. I want to hear her wording.
All right. Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll open public hearing.
Good evening, Commissioner Sapika, resident, Old Town. Congratulations, Chairman, Vice Chair, welcome, Commissioner Aguilar. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much, too, for item 2. I know that the two departed, but there's also an agent of my client, John Kruger. It was a 12-month process, and really special thanks to Stephen Fowler for really very diligent work on that with a fairly complex project, and thank you for approving it. Onto this item. I would amplify and continue to maintain the position that I have since, I think, 2010, when these issues began. Again, I'm speaking purely as a citizen activist, not a member of any board or agency, but until federal law becomes uniform with state law, I believe that ensuring the maximal restriction effectively is the best course of action. I personally am pro-legalization, but that to Commissioner Aguilar's issues and also to Patty's issues, I really feel that this does a good job of allowing what the law and the voters said are allowed. And I, too, have family members who, A, use medical products, and B, I have a family member who has the right to grow plants in a different state in their residence, and this seems to do a good job of doing that. And I thought Amy articulated kind of what it's doing correctly, which is really, let's keep what happens inside your home, and as a private citizen, in this limited enclosure, yours, and we're not going to bother you. And I think that makes it small and containable, and any other use that isn't already covered by the medical component should be controlled and regulated. And I think the character and consistency of the town is such that this is appropriate, until we have agreement between federal law and state law. And I think I've said that with every case. So I would amplify that, repeat it, and thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Having none, public hearing is closed. Discussion or motion?
Amy, have anything?
I'm looking at the existing language to see how we address it. Mr. Basham and I were just discussing, because we, when we came before you with the medical marijuana language, actually, when we came before City Council, we were concerned about leisure world, where the medical issues might be of concern.
So if, I guess they come from areas you're not expecting them.
I think, wouldn't it be easier just to propose striking that one line that states to prohibit all marijuana uses? And just strike it instead of adding or changing the language?
Try to use that or it's got to be qualified?
Well, before that, it does address specifically medical marijuana. And then it makes a broad statement in basically saying all prohibits all uses. And then it goes back to saying the cultivation prohibits.
I think he might be right.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
I'm proposing just striking the line that specifies to prohibit all marijuana uses, just those words. If we strike those, it would change the language to coincide with what...
That's the restrictive words, right there.
Right.
Everything else is there.
I think that's the whole point of this, isn't it? Is we're talking about commercial or recreational use, otherwise...
I know, but it just says recreational use. It says all use.
Exceptions for indoor cultivation and private residences.
Right, but again, I think that the message we're sending here, isn't it? That, okay, so we've already said no to medical marijuana and we're also saying no to other commercial marijuana uses. So we have to say that one way or another.
We could take out that language and then the quote, to prohibit all other marijuana uses.
I know, this commissioner's opinion is that this covers it pretty well. And I think this says exactly what we want to say. It's consistent with what we've said in the past, which, and it has worked in the past. And that is, we're saying that we are going to be as restrictive with regards to marijuana cultivation, sale, use, medical, all otherwise, as were allowed by law. And we will continue to do that. So I move to approve this particular ordinance.
I second it.
And I have problems with the verbiage, all marijuana use.
Okay, well, then you don't need to, you don't need to side with the...
But instead of all other medical marijuana or marijuana use, could we say to prohibit... Just a moment. Instead of all other, excuse me. Instead of all other marijuana uses, could we not say prohibit, to prohibit all, instead of other, commercial marijuana uses? Because then we say, and to prohibit marijuana... Why couldn't we do that?
Yes, we could do that. Yes, I think I'm right.
Commercial marijuana? That takes care of it.
Amy, do you think that is an improvement?
Yes. Rather than deleting that phrase, we'll say to prohibit all commercial marijuana uses.
And non-medical, the same thing? Commercial and non-medical is the same thing? Okay, good.
Yeah, we could change. I think the... May I just add one thing? I think the message you want staff to convey to the city council is, tell me if this is wrong. You want to enable people who have a medical justification to be able to use medical marijuana in their home without fear of violating the ordinance.
Yes.
And as long as we convey that through the ordinance and we can make the change if the commission votes that way, and then between now and the council meeting, we will go back through and make sure that conveys that. And we can report back with the modified language so that rather than delaying this, we will get, move it forward to the council meeting, but we will report back to you, this is what we've done.
So should we wait till we hear from you before we vote on it?
I would suggest no because of the time concern. The sooner you get something in place, right now, there is nothing. So, yeah, I'm happy with Commissioner Machin's suggestion. I just want to go through and make sure we've done what you, as incorporated by the commission, would like to have people be able to do.
It's just that in the past, we've had better luck when we come back to use things.
Do we have a motion?
Chair Machin?
Well, the motion was as is written here, but I've heard two things. I can summarize.
I was going to say, could someone restate the motion?
That's what I'm going to attempt to do. Because I heard two things that were going to happen. One is that we will modify the title to change the word "other" to "commercial."
Okay, good.
And two is we are going to ask legal to look at the language within the ordinance and be specific that legal use of medical marijuana within people's homes as which is allowed currently will continue to be allowed. Something along those lines.
Yes, and by the way, on the examples, they cited specificity and seizures for two different things.
And if you want to make that part of the motion, the definition refers to diagnoses as opposed to symptoms, like HIV. But if the commission wants to have us add seizures, we can add seizures.
Because that is something separate.
Okay, and item three, out of deference to Commissioner Campbell, we will add seizures to that list. So that is my motion, if that makes sense to everyone here.
No, that's good.
And on that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Please vote. Five to four. Motion passes.
Who voted no?
Five to four.
You said five oh. I thought you said four to something.
Five and three. We don't count one though.
All right. Hey, moving on. Oh, do you have anything to tell us about... Well, there's no, there's no kind of...
Director's report.
Just director's report. I was thinking the 10 days.
No, because it goes to council.
Amy, when you finish doing whatever it is you're going to do, can I have a copy of it?
No. Yes, I think we should, we will bring it back.
Because I really...
That was a joke.
Okay, I really, at this point, prefer that we see what it is we're voting on, not... This is what we think we're voting on, okay? And we voted already, but I'm just saying, I would like to...
Madam Chair, just to make sure this is clear, we'll bring back a copy, but this is moving forward to City Council. Okay?
Unless I know it's moving forward, but I want to know what we, sure what we... Director's report, please.
Madam Chair, nothing to add. Welcome aboard, Commissioner Aguilar. We're grateful that you decided to devote and volunteer your services. A lot awaits you in this coming year. There's quite a few items that are forthcoming. So we welcome your knowledge and your expertise. So appreciate it very much.
Any commission concerns?
Do we have, don't we have another item? Item four in our packet?
I've got one for 239 15th Street. I don't have an item four.
I do. Maybe it was from a meeting I missed.
Any commission concerns?
I also welcome the new commissioner. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Very happy to have you.
I do have some comments. One, I received a complaint from someone here in Old Town regarding a house at 118 7th Street. It's a new house built about a year or so ago, and it has a canopy on top that's been there for over a year. And apparently, it says detached canopies are permitted on roof decks provided the canopies are permitted only if they are collapsible and maintained below the height limit, but not in use. This thing has been up since day one. I don't know if that's permitted.
That's something that you would bring to the planning department.
Okay, well, I figured, we're here tonight, so I figured I'd mention it. And then the only other comment I have is we're going to miss Esther Cummings. She was here a long time, she did a good job.
Yes, we are going to miss her.
Okay, we're going to miss Esther. So definitely, we miss you. We miss you, Esther. And welcome, Robert.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.